Test, test, test.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting of the Town of Mills River Planning Board to order. If everyone would please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance, please stand. Thank you. At this time, we'll take any adjustments or additions to tonight's agenda. Does anyone have anything? Okay, so tonight, we also need to add at this point, we have a newly appointed member, Mr. Abbott, who needs to be sworn in, and then Mr. Wiggins has also been appointed after much discussion. We're thankful he's back with us. So both of these folks need to be sworn in. Would you like them to come up? Are they going to do this at their seat? If you gentlemen will go to the podium, that would be awesome.
Stand there, right hand on the Bible. Left hand on the. I will read this, and then you gentlemen can read it at the same time.
Okay.
At the same.
Just re-read it, yeah.
I do solemnly and sincerely swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that I will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of my knowledge and abilities. So help me God. I further solemnly swear that I will execute the office of Planning Board Member for the Town of Mills River, North Carolina, without prejudice, favor, affection, or partiality to the best of my skill and ability. So help me God. This third day of May, 2022. And will repeat.
Simultaneous?
Simultaneous, yes. Hi.
You go ahead and say yourself.
Okay.
Hi, John Abbott, do solemnly and sincerely swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof. And that I will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of my knowledge and ability. So help me God.
I, John Abbott, further solemnly swear that I will execute the office of Planning Board Member for the Town of Mills River, North Carolina,
without prejudice, favor, affection, or partiality to the best of my skill and ability. So help me God.
This third day.
This is the third day of May, 2022. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for that. So at this time, just mentioning that you received an electronic copy of the minutes from our previous meeting on April the 5th. If there are any changes or additions, if we'll note those at that time. If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, Mr. Oliver's made a motion to approve the minutes. Mr. Abbott seconded that. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, and the minutes are approved. At this time, we'll go to public comment. Do we have any electronic public comment? I know there are none signed in, correct? No public comment tonight. And there is no old business, so we are going to shift right into our new business tonight. The first order of new business is a request for rezoning, which is R-22-01. So, Mr. Malatik, if you'd like to give an overview, and then I'm sure we have some folks here to answer questions.
Good evening, Planning Board members. I'm going to summarize my staff report, just for those listening online. So on April 25th, the town received a rezoning application from Moore and Sun Site Contractors, acting as an agent for James A. Goode, trustee of the James A. Goode Revocable Trust, which, who owns the subject properties 140 Emma Sharp Road and 5 Penland Road. And the request is to rezone them from Mills River Mixed Use, MRMU, to Mills River General Business. Staff looked closer at the properties and found that the 140 Emma Sharp Road property actually has a split zoning from previous parcels being recombined with the property. So there's a small portion of the property that has the neighborhood commercial zoning, but after checking with the applicant, the intent is still to rezone both parcels, 140 Emma Sharp Road and 5 Penland Road, to the general business district. I'm just going to summarize the zoning districts mentioned. So the mixed-use zoning district is allowed, is established to allow all uses. So basically, any commercial use, residential use, except for heavy impact, industrial uses, specifically those with hazardous waste and adult establishments, those are not, not permitted. There's further description of other uses allowed with special use permits and other procedures in your packet. The neighborhood commercial zoning district is meant to provide compatible residential and commercial uses, which protect and enhance the rural character of Mills River. Some uses permitted by right include retail offices, single-family dwellings, et cetera. There's another list of uses allowed with a minor special use permit and other development standards listed in your packet. Again, neighborhood commercial is the small portion of the 140 Emma Sharp Road property that is the split zone. And then the general business zoning district, which is what the applicants are asking to be rezoned to, is meant to provide a place for offices, personal services, and the retailing of durable and convenience goods. For the community, districts are located on major thoroughfares and collector streets because these commercial uses are subject to public view and are important to the economy of the community. They shall, they shall have ample parking, controlled traffic, and suitable landscaping. Some example uses in the permitted use tables quite long for this one, but encompasses most commercial, retail, and related business uses, as the district name implies, is restaurants, medical clinics, physical fitness centers, care facilities, libraries, art institutions, hardware stores, gift shops, banks, offices, and related uses. There are other uses allowed with a minor special use permit, which includes shopping centers, hotels and inns, bowling alleys, and recreation facilities, drive-in restaurants, et cetera, auditoriums, mixed uses. And with a minor special use permit, you're also allowed to have a commercial use not named that falls within the spirit and intent of the district. So that's the summary of the zoning districts. Again, the application lists the proposed district as general business. This is just a note for all board members when doing a rezoning, and that's why I include the full zoning ordinance in your packet. This board should consider all potential uses, because once a property is rezoned, any permitted use or use allowed with a special use permit can happen on that property. We're not here to pick out specific uses or development projects as part of a rezoning. That's called contract zoning, basically rezoning for a specific project, and that's illegal in the state of North Carolina. This rezoning request is consistent with the Making Mills River 2040 Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Vision Map, which designates this property and the whole surrounding area as the community center land use category. And this identifies desire, identifies desirable future land uses as retail, restaurants, offices, civic and community uses, and others. Again, this is in alignment with many of the permitted uses in the general business district, which is what the applicant intends to, or is petitioning to rezon to. Since this request involves rezoning just two parcels differently from the surrounding area, the board does need to consider some additionable reasonableness considerations. So we're not open to a spot zoning challenge. Spot zoning is when you zone a specific parcel or group of small parcels that are owned by a single person different from the surrounding area. And again, this board doesn't have to have a reasonableness statement, like your statement of consistency, but the record should just reflect that we consider some of these reasonableness items. And again, you can turn back to this section, but those items for discussion are the size and physical attributes of the site, the compatibility with the existing comprehensive land use plan, the benefits and detriments to the landowner, the neighbors, and the community through the rezoning, the relationship between the proposed uses and the current uses of adjacent properties, why the rezoning is in the public interest, and any change conditions warranting the rezoning. So again, just something to consider in your discussion, which will protect the town against a spot zoning challenge. That's the end of my summary. Staff recommends approval of this rezoning request because it is consistent with the Making Mills River Comprehensive Land and Comprehensive Plan and the Land Use Vision Map. The specific items I found to be consistent were Objective 1.6, Policy 1.6.2, Objective 4.3, Policy 4.3.4, Objective 6.2, Policy 6.2.1, and Policy 6.2.2, and Objective 6.4, Policy 6.4.3. Those are all specifically listed in the draft statement of consistency, if this board chooses to adopt that. And again, the planning board's role in this request is advisory. The board's role is to make a recommendation for or against the rezoning for consideration by town council. So again, before you tonight, you can either recommend approval of the request table a month for additional consideration or recommend denial. And I mentioned that a statement of consistency is included in the packet. Per state law, the planning board has to approve a statement of consistency or inconsistency with the plan for each rezoning. The attachment, attachments in your packet include the different zoning districts, the current and proposed zoning map, if, if the rezoning is approved, the 2040 Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map, the categories, and again, the statement of consistency. So I'll stop there and happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Mike. So I'll just turn this over to anyone who has questions. I have a few of my own, but I'll let you guys start.
I just have one quick question right now. What's the total acreage on all of these parcels we're talking about?
The applicant may know off the top of their head, but I can pull it up.
Okay.
Yeah, so the 140 Emma Sharp Road parcel is about thirteen and a half, and again, this is approximate from the GIS. And then the 5 Penland Road parcel is about two and a quarter, again, approximate.
So Mike, in, in your policy analysis, you talked about that this change, this rezoning, would be in alignment with many of the permitted uses in Mills River General Business. Are there any that you can think of that it would not be in alignment with?
I'd have to read through real quickly, just to double check. Again, general business is focused really specifically on business, retail, and related uses. So while the Comprehensive Plan Community Center category has a little bit of a more extensive list, because again, if you look at the Comprehensive Plan map, the Community Center category is really confined to these major intersections, major corridors of the town.
And I only ask that just because of what you pointed out, you know, once it's rezoned, that will stay forever, and you know, if, if something were to be put there now, and then something changed hands, it could possibly potentially be something else. So I just want to make sure there's nothing there that would not be in alignment.
So the Community Center category lists not desirable uses as industrial and estate lots. General business does not allow those. In fact, general business does not allow residential development, really of any kind.
Gotcha. Okay. Go ahead. Yeah, sure, please.
So I'm wondering what the benefit if the MU zoning allows all uses with a few minor, well, they're pretty major, but they're just a few exceptions. Why, what would be the advantage to changing it over to GB?
One advantage is the dimensional requirements of the district. So each zoning district has different building setback requirements, building coverage or lot coverage requirements, and building size requirements. So the mixed-use district, and we've run into this a couple of times before on different projects in town, limits maximum building size for a single building to 15,000 square feet. In other situations, we've had tenants that have wanted larger buildings and have kind of split up their project into Hills Machinery is an example. On Old Haywood Road, on the north side of town, they built three 11,000 square foot buildings instead of building one larger one. So one benefit of this district is the where's it here? There is no the maximum building size basically states that the building footprint shall cover no more than 50% of the total lot area. So maximum building size is more open.
And this particular property is within our architectural overlay district, correct?
That's correct. The building would have to be within 500 feet of one of the qualifying roads, but yes, it's surrounded by Boylston Highway, which is a road that triggers the requirement, and then Jeffress Road also is a road that would trigger the requirement. So if you had a building, if you see my map here, if you have a building about down here, and if, if that's within 500 feet of Jeffress Road, it would trigger it from that side as well.
Yep.
It didn't appear to me that there is access from Boylston Highway at the present time, nor is that part of the property that is, quote, adjacent, the M, is it? No. Penland, I think, is the only access other than Emma that I, I saw. Is there access to it from Boylston?
I mean, Penland Road is the access from Boylston. And the applicants here, they, they may be able to answer in more detail, but Emma Sharp Road is a right-of-way. I believe it's private. And Penland Road, you, you may want to get into, yeah, is also a right-of-way. Vance Hill. Vance Hill.
There's three access points.
So Vance Hill, that actually is a DOT road. I may think about it. So Vance Hill, and then Penland, and also that shot.
I've got a question. Do you plan on grading all that at a level?
It'll tear up. It won't be all flat with our proposed master.
Yeah, there's a, quite a bit of change in the biography from the back of the flat. So it would slope, the back of it would have a slope coming down towards the front of property, then probably have two or three different tiers.
So where would the primary ingress and egress be, do you anticipate? Is it going to be that traffic light opposite, older one on anyone?
Yes, it would be from Vance Hill. About here, and also from here, probably from here as well. These two would be the primary, certainly, as we visit the signal.
Right.
So again, just to summarize, three points of access. But again, let's just be careful. We're not getting into uses or development plans.
Yes, I'm with you. Can, can we talk about number of jobs created?
Not without a development plan.
So Vance Hill is a right-of-way road, which is adjacent to the property only by going up around the curve and back down. Is that right?
No, sorry. It would be Vance Hill where it comes in the highway, sorry. Right-of-way actually is runs up here, pretty wide, right-of-way. The access point should probably be essentially come right in here.
So is there any?
You would not have to go up, up and around, or so basically. This is.
I think right now you have a log crossing over what could potentially be the closest access to the property rather than going up and around. And, and I guess my question essentially is, if you were to draw a straight line from Boylston, straight up Vance, Vance normally curves around the left. Is there going to be or intention of modifying that section to increase or to?
Yes.
That's, that's a great question. Yeah, that is an airpin turn in there. Just to make sure too, that, that's the two parcels of the question. This is one, and this is the other right here. Right, it's okay. And so our conversation with the, preliminary conversation with the DFT would be that they want to improve this road to make it so it doesn't have that airpin turn. They want it to come in to this site with this road potentially not sort of gotten that far. We would have access from this point right here without having to go up there, and they actually require some improvements to this road to make it function better.
And the burden of cost would be on? Thank you.
Additional questions?
Well, I guess I have a comment of sorts. If I'm out of line, just stop me. We, you know, about five or six years ago, had a similar situation, I call it. You know, as that piece of property was, you could put most anything on it. So the people came to us and wanted to rezon it for a future project that would contain one item, which is under construction right now, and that's Party Surgery Center down there. So they kind of, instead of having two dozen, we don't know what business is in there, we kind of settled it, and they are building that surgery center now. Like I said, if I'm out of line, just disregard. Do you have any definite plans, type thing for this? Okay. That's all I have, yeah.
That kind of falls into that contractual stuff. Sorry, my friend.
It seems to me, correct me if I'm wrong, or let me shut up, the a few months, maybe a year ago, there was some dispute from, and comments, and not very pleasant comments from some folks who were upset that a particular property was over, in their opinion, overbuilt. And the response that I saw was that it met the requirements of the district. And we had no, because of the contract zoning, we had no choice but to allow them to do it as long as each of those individual aspects met the other requirements that we have listed. And that's, I guess, one of the questions that I have is, because it was stated that once this zoning district is re-zoned, it's forever done. And I'm wondering if there's any comment about that.
I'll just say that like any land use approval, rezoning does run with the land, but rezonings can be changed. I mean, sorry, zoning can be changed. So you can rezone to general business. Again, this is all hypothetical. The town just has a one-year waiting period between rezoning requests. So if someone were to come before, get denied, they can't turn around right away and apply again. There's a one-year waiting period. But again, hypothetically, in he, in theory, this property, if it were approved for general business, could be rezoned now. And again, hypothetically, in theory, they could come back a year from now and rezone to something else, or apply to rezone to something else. But again, it's up to this board to recommend for or against, and then council to make the final decision. Primarily, it's the property owner or an agent for the property owner or the town itself.
So is that something Planning Board, in your?
It's red. Oh, maybe that's a caution. Okay. A year down the road, things aren't going the way the town thinks that they should be. Is that something the Planning Board would be recommending to the town? To have it rezoned back to MU or back to a different kind of zoning?
Usually that would come from council. Now, this planning board always makes recommendations to council on land use matters. So I mean, that can always be passed on, but usually council or the town manager is the one to initiate that process.
So then it's not set in stone forever in a day, what this, if it's re-designated to GB, it's not hard and fast, and we can never change it.
Correct. Rezonings can always be done, again, outside of the one-year waiting period, but I'll, I'll just caution and say too, what I said earlier, you know, is true, is that, you know, when approving a new zoning, you should look at that in perpetuity, as if, you know, if it were to be there forever, and all use is considered as well.
And I will make the comment that we've always kind of, even though it's not written in stone, just like what the Comprehensive Plan says, the community center of Mills River, the general business, if you will, has, has kind of always been understood to be schoolhouse in 191, not schoolhouse, schoolhouse in 280, down to old 191 and 280. So that's kind of been the corridor that we've kind of said, this is, if, if we have general business, this is where we want it to be located and concentrated. And of course, this isn't that very upper tip of that, but it's still kind of within that, that area. So for what it's worth.
And just for context, I know there's an excerpt of our current zoning map in your packet. General business is in the blue. So just to echo what you're saying, we currently have general business. We currently have general business zoning around the major corridors of Haywood Road, Boylston Highway. We have the party property. I don't, I wasn't here when Ingalls got approved, but that kind of falls into the same category, even though it's not zoned that way. And then again, a lot of the properties on the northern side of Boylston going all the way down the turnpike. So like where the fire department is building their new headquarters station. That's general business as well, all on that side.
Remind me, please, when do the, um, the signs go up so that the, the adjacent property owners would be notified?
It's all in advance of a public hearing and that's what happens with town council. So 10 to 25 days before, usually we try to get within the 20 to 25 day window to give people ample time. Um, the sign will be posted and letters will be mailed to adjacent property owners. And then within that, uh, three week plus period. Um, there's two newspaper advertisements, usually one the week before the hearing and then one a week before that.
Mike, can you remind everyone what the abutting uses are to that property? I think we just, we just saw a couple of those.
The actual use is like in the satellite view.
Well, I know, I know we have like Bojangles and.
Oh, yeah.
Um, Circle K and the backside. I think there's a.
So you're, yeah, the backside. So let me go around here because I'm not familiar with all of it. Vance Hill Drive goes up to a medical complex with also a county EMS station. So that's up at the northeastern corner. Um, this back area, which again is all zoned. Neighborhood commercial, which is that transitional residential commercial, commercial district. That's what it's zoned, but a lot of it's single family residential. And again, that's back up, um, because there's a hill. You know, the grade gets steeper up here. So that's back up over this ridge. We have Mills River Auto Brokers currently on the Five Penland Road property. We have the mulch grinding operation across Boylston Highway. So I'm going around in half hazard order. We've got this new storage center going in up here. Some vacant land and we've got Ingalls right across the way from the intersection. And then we've got Bojangles here, Circle K here. A vacant home here that's supposed to be a commercial use in the future. And then again, vacant land on the backside that's part of the subject property. And then I don't know all these uses, but we have the Valvoline oil change, Baker Roofing is back there. There's another tree service business. So, so other, I'd say heavier commercial uses.
Thank you very much. Anyone have any other questions?
And Mike, all those uses would fit in the general business. The ones that you just named, they would fit in the zoning if they were to be zoned this way. Correct.
That's correct. I, I have to double check for.
Right, but there's no residential.
That's correct. They're, they're all within, uh, those related categories.
So though, although this isn't a, um, it's a separate type zoning, it's not, it's different. But it isn't incompatible with what's around it. Because they could all fit in this.
So are they proposing to combine all these parcels and it will be one? Is that what they're proposing?
No, there's, at this time, there's no subdivision, no lot recombination. It's just rezoning the two parcels to general business.
Any additional questions? None. Okay. Well, um, again, our role tonight is just as an advisory role, we can, um. Recommend to town council that this be approved. We can recommend it be denied, or we can talk about it further for about 30 more days. So if we have a motion of our recommendation, I would love to hear that. Nobody wants to talk tonight.
Is there something to read? I'm looking.
There is for the statement of consistency.
And again, it can be done in a single motion. So you could either recommend to approve rezoning R 2201 and adopt the statement of consistency and identify the specific objectives and policies. You don't have to read them all out. Um, or you can do it as two separate motions.
It does have that. I'm just not sure I read that many words in one stretch of that. Just, okay. Well, help me out if I get lost. Well, I'd like to make a motion that we recommend approval of the rezoning. Request R 22 dash 01 and find that it's in line with the Making Mills River Comprehensive Plan, Element One, Land Use, Element Four, Community Facilities and Services. Element Six, Infrastructure and Economic Development, and meets the four objectives, 1.6, 4.3, 6.2, and 6.4.
Thank you for that motion. Do I get a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we got a second by Mr. Wiggins first. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, that passes unanimously. So we will send that on to town council and they will go from there.
Just for your knowledge, before we close that out, um, I'll most likely be going to council May 12th to set the public hearing date. And we're looking at a public hearing date tentatively set for June 9th.
Okay, thank you. If you guys would like to skeed addle, this would be a great time or you can hang around for our next discussion. Right, our next order of new business is a discussion of density limitations and residential product types. Um, this direction came from town council. Um, and again, I think tonight is just, just an initial discussion. Hopefully. Some of them are listening into our discussion and to see what, what we think about it and any questions we may have. But Mr. Maltech, I'll let you give an overview of that as well.
Thank you. So at the April 14th council meeting, uh, members did discuss the maximum allowed density of four units per acre, which, um. Applicants can take advantage of through the multifamily development process. Um, and they discussed the possibility of decreasing this maximum allowed density from four units an acre and. Throughout two and a half to three units in an acre as a possible substitute. There were a number of other topics discussed, but they also expressed interest in examining definitions of different residential product types. So. Single family home versus a duplex versus a town home, how they're defined and what density is applied to each. Um, and directed staff to bring this to the, the planning board for discussion. So in summary of what's in our code, um, the four units per acre applies to the following development types. Manufactured home parks, so a dwelling unit being a manufactured or mobile home, multifamily developments, tiny home parks. Again, a, a unit being a single tiny home, park model parks and RV parks. Those are the only development types that can take advantage of the four unit and acre density. Um, they also all require major special use permits for approval. So again. Uh, as we saw with the Jeffers Town Homes, a pre-application meeting with this board and then ultimately a quasi judicial evidentiary, evidentiary hearing. Uh, with final decision authority with town council. Um, so looking further into that, the density requirement we have in the town for detached, single family homes and duplexes is one dwelling unit per 30,000 square feet, which is also our minimum lot size. That comes out to 0.69 acres approximately. Um, but this also means since a duplex has two dwelling units, it's penalized in a way because in order to build a duplex, you need to have almost. One and a half acres of land, 1.38 is the exact amount. There's a couple of special development types that have different density requirements. So we have. Single family residential cluster developments and planned residential developments. Um, they both allow smaller minimum lot sizes. So instead of 30,000 square feet, 20,000 square feet minimum lot sizes. But the density across the whole development is actually stricter or less dense, one dwelling unit per 40,000 square feet, which is about 0.92 acres. And reading through the code, uh, the, the logic behind that is to be able to cluster homes. In a minor way on smaller lots, but have lower density across the parcel to allow for land preservation, open spaces, um, stuff like that. Um, I did include or just copy and paste the zoning code definitions for the different residential product types. You know, i- i- if we want to modify these, there's a couple of places we can look, um, other municipalities, ordinances. Um, I would also, I always look at the new state land use law, chapter 160D, which we did a bunch of text amendments for a couple of years ago. Those have some statewide definitions, but, uh, these are the definitions there. Um, and then getting into my brief policy analysis now, and I'll just read this again into the record for those listening. Um, so density is complicated. Um, and again, this is just my personal analysis as staff, professional, personal. So if you decrease the density from four units an acre to two and a half or three units an acre. The end result is you have less dense developments, both multifamily, tiny home parks, all those development types that were able to use four units an acre. And again, one of the, the items council highlighted in talking about this, um, at the last meeting. Was protecting, you know, the, one of the main goals of the comprehensive plan, protecting the rural and agricultural characteristic of the town. What's lower density does contribute towards. But then decreasing density also means more lands needed for development. Even single family homes. So that can lead to more agricultural land, open space and natural areas being developed because it's just an equation. In order to build X number of houses as a developer and have your pro forma or your balance sheet work. You have to have a certain number of units. And if there's lower density requirements, that means more land is, is eaten up, quote unquote, as part of that process. Um, so that also could go against some comprehensive, comprehensive plan goals of agricultural land preservation, natural lands preservation. Um, and then I think I highlighted another one. Encouraging housing choices, um, which I've brought up before. Land costs have increased here. Um, there was an analysis done by a Realtor in the Grow Mills River meeting that I think. Um, in the last year, and again, this doesn't account 2022, but, uh, in 2021, land prices went up 35 to 37 percent. And that's just vacant land. Um, so again, requiring more land for development means more cost and ultimately that cost ends up being, uh, shouldered by the buyer, the renter, et cetera. So that's my analysis there. So we have a townwide density requirement for single family dwellings and duplexes, which is the one dwelling unit per 30,000 square feet or 0.69 acres. And then we have specific density requirements for these special use permit or special development types, multifamily, tiny home parks, RV parks, et cetera. That's one way of doing it. Another way is to have towns or local governments, counties. Have different density requirements per zoning district. So again, we do it townwide. But some towns do it by zoning district and that way you can encourage denser development. Like just we were, what we were talking about in this last example with the rezoning and. Community center, major corridors, more dense development could be allowed there if you go with the zoning district density model. And then you could have lower density and more agricultural suburban areas, um, like that. Um, so that's one benefit to going that way. This is the method used by Henderson County and the city of Hendersonville. And unfortunately, just due to limited time this week, I, I wasn't able to put together my full analysis of their ordinances, but I, I do want to, I'll take some questions and then I did want to walk through. Some of them, um, on the computer, um, just showing how they regulate density by zoning district and also how they have special allowances for duplexes that make. Them a little more buildable or feasible to build, um, because I have heard before in council meetings and in other settings that. Not quote unquote affordable housing as defined, you know, in national land development standards, but. Having more reasonably priced housing in Mills River, you know, is a goal I've heard from both residents and from, uh, council members. And again, in, in order to reach that, we have to balance this equation of density and the character of the town and also requiring more land for development. And specifically with duplexes too, I, I really think we are penalizing duplexes by basically requiring. Two single family home lots to put. That type of a building on. Um, so I'll stop there. That's the end of my staff report. Does anyone have questions or do you want to dive into some ordinance?
Well, I have a first question that perhaps will direct where we're going. I. I would really like a little clarification of what exactly it is town council is asking of us. I mean, in, in our, the background, it says they. Um, discussed and then they expressed interest in examining the definitions. Are they looking at redefining some of these things? And then they asked. You to bring it, bring it, the topic to us for discussion, but I mean, we talk about D S C all day long, but. Um, I'm just not sure what, what they are desiring of us. I need some clarification.
For tonight, I believe it was focused on the number. How many units per acre? Does this board believe is an appropriate amount for these? Under our current ordinance, these specific development types. I dove a little further. Into the whole discussion and about regulation and how to even look at it. But from what I heard at the council meeting, it was the number specifically that they were interested in feedback on. I'll just say there were a number of other topics brought up, um, that were triggered by the Jeffers Town Home Special Use Permit. But I think we need to tackle these one at a time over maybe a couple of meetings.
So they, so really the, the numbers of units allowed per definition, looking at the definition, single family duplex, townhomes. Those kinds of things, looking at the number, the number of units that, that is allowable essentially.
Correct, but.
Whether we're satisfied with what exists or if we think we should change it.
But specifically, again, I broadened it. Specifically, their focus was on the maximum allowable for town homes and these special development types. Do you think four units an acre is too much? I mean, everyone here, sorry, except for Mr. Abbott, saw, saw the Jeffers Town Home plans. And again, how they're allowed four units an acre across a 35 acre parcel, which resulted in, I'm rounding, but about 150 town home units. But that they were able to cluster them on one section of the parcel at a very high density. So again. I mean, maybe that's something to even look and do, but now I'm just regurgitating or mirroring that discussion they had.
The impression that I got in watching that meeting and Jim, I know you were there, you may have gotten the same impression. Town council is, is, seems to be interested in. Making development less dense. Is that the impression you got?
Just based on the pa- the fact that they threw out two and a half or three units an acre is the new maximum means decreasing density.
Yep.
And, and that would be all across Mills River, not just in the residential and agricultural areas.
That's correct. And that's why I brought up the zoning district, um, approach, because again. Our density requirements are townwide. Doesn't matter where you are, what zoning district you're in. If you build a single family home, you need 0.69 acres. If you're building a multifamily project anywhere in the town, again, it's only allowed in a couple of zoning districts, but you're allowed four units an acre.
We discussed that some with the town homes, you know, Jeff drove a while back. Uh, but it boils down to me with utilities that has everything to do with this too. You can't do that without. Water and sewer, uh, public water sewer there. So it wouldn't really correspond to rural and we have wells so much with. And, you know, their own sewer system.
There could come a point in time where some of our more rural areas do have access to, we, you know, you. There could come a point in time where some of our more rural areas do have access to, we, you know, you, we have to look beyond, you know, this moment. So.
Yeah.
Uh, I know this is all tonight, a very, very preliminary discussion, but um my thoughts, uh, as far as increasing the density, you know, could be a possibility, but if we did, or they did. Uh, is there some way we could specify something to in, entice the builder to make a certain percentage workforce housing. Then, you know, that's my big concern and overall, we need workforce housing in Mills River. So I, I don't know what the answer is, but that's just my thoughts at this point.
And that was brought up in the council meeting, um, allowing a density bonus. It's called for a certain number of workforce qualifying units. Um, and that is a possibility, but I just haven't had the time to do the research to, to delve that far into it.
I do know that there have been some of the new apartment complexes and, and such in Henderson County that that have done that. They've, they said a certain percentage of these are gonna fall within a certain price range that is considered workforce affordability. So, um, you know, with multifamily developments, that's certainly something we could, could look at, but I, I just off the top, just reading through what little we got here, I, I think I would like to see more about um density based on zoning districts. Um, obviously, general business, you know, there's not, no residential there, so that's out of the equation. We'll have to consider that, but but looking maybe at how some other places do that, it may or may not be feasible. I don't know without looking at it a little more closely, but I, I think it's worth looking into just to see, you know, what could happen. Um, and I know you gave, gave the, the pros and cons for the cluster development. Um, you know, if town council really wants to reduce density, then I think one of the main things that you're gonna have to do is take away the ability to have cluster development. I mean, a lot of, a lot of our, the complaints that I hear from our citizens, they dislike, you know, Mills River crossing and all the phases of that, and you have, you know, these big houses one right beside the other, but they're allowed to do that because of cluster development. And so if that's something that our citizens are opposed to seeing, the only way to remedy that is to disallow cluster development.
Well, if I can jump in, and again, I wasn't, I've only been here a year. I wasn't here when the original Mills River Crossing phases were approved, but I've looked at them quite extensively. Though, those were not approved as cluster developments, they're just straight single family subdivisions. But I will say, just from having seen it and, and just knowing the economics on the real estate side. Again, requiring more land to build a single family house on, you need to recover more cost at the end. And one way to do that is to build large homes.
I just, I just wonder, and, and you know, this is all just theoretical and looking towards the future and just, you know, w- w- we don't know what that is and, and I was under the impression that there was some cluster developments, so I guess I'm, I'm incorrect on that. Um. But if, if, if you disallowed cluster development, yes, it's going to increase needing a larger amount of land. It's going to increase costs, but at the same time, will that, just the fact that it incurs greater cost, will that potentially curb so rapid the development that we see? I don't know, you know, and that's a, I guess that's a
One other minor question here. What's the definition of minor clustering of homes?
That's made up by yours truly. I mean, that it allow, a smaller lot sizes allows for the, smaller lot sizes can allow for clustering of homes, but again, going from thirty thousand square feet to twenty thousand square feet. The clustering is limited. It's still, I mean, uh, again, M- Mills River is unique in, in its setting and the characteristics, but if you look at other benchmark towns and cities, um, it's still a large lot.
I was wondering, um, not completely familiar with Jeffers Road, that was earlier discussed. Uh, originally the plan, and I'm not gonna say it was necessarily codified by anybody, but it was to space these houses out in a larger area and they wound up clustering, is that the right term? Um, into a smaller area, so you line up with more houses on a smaller footprint. Is that still within the four houses per?
It is, um, the way the ordinance is written, and again, I'm paraphrasing off the top of my head, is that you're allowed that density calculation based on the total acreage of the parcel. So the parcel they were developing, and again, I'm pulling this off my head, was about thirty-five acres. So thirty-five acres times four, that's their maximum allowable number of units. And then it goes on to say that all subdivision requirements, lot sizes, et cetera, waived. Uh, waived. There are no lot size requirements. So another approach to control that, again, if, if that's the way we're going, is to require a minimum lot size. Now, ta- townhomes are a very special product that usually require a quite small lot size. Now again, that's where staff can do research on what's the standard and push that up a bit to require the houses or sorry, townhome units to be separated, but you're also fighting against the residential product type itself. I mean, multifamily is defined as a single building housing, three families or more. And the way they split the lots up is they just draw a line right between the building. It's almost like a condo where the, the lot line is in the middle of your wall. Um, so how, how you could space those out more, the units out more when they're in an attached building uh, is beyond me. I don't know, but that'd be one approach is to require some minimum lot size, whereas right now there's no requirement.
So just briefly, if we could shift the discussion to, for example, the development that is off of Turnpike Road and visible from Boylston Highway. That looks, those are pretty good sized homes, and I believe they're single family homes. Um. You have an idea of how that got approved regarding acreage um and density?
They're allowed by right. They're, they're single family homes all on thirty thousand square foot lots or greater. So again, when that, the, just a little background, the subdivision process is that a, a major subdivision, which is I think eleven lots or more that are created, newly created lots comes before me. I conduct a review at the staff level, and then major subdivisions come to this planning board for a final review. But again, w- we're only allowed to review based on our current code and ordinance requirements. And the only thing that's required of me, I mean, besides road construction and a lot of other standards for lot size. It's, it's the townwide standard of one dwelling unit per thirty thousand square feet, and that's also the minimum lot size. So as long as that's met, it's allowed by right.
So it'd be your fix or suggest, what, not your fix, but would be a, a possible fix for preventing something like the Turnpike property from happening.
Like such large, ba- let's use the term like McMansions.
Yeah, but, but, but it's not just that. It's, it's so many, so closely enti- I, I, sure. You know, they might meet the minimum requirement, but those homes are so huge that they could reach out the bedroom window and shake the, their neighbor's hand. It's, it's so close.
Most of them are at least ten feet away from the property line, but, but that's also a product of our mixed use zoning district, which all of the developments and Mills River Crossing were, were built in. The mixed use um zoning district has no setback requirements for buildings of a residential character. So you can build your single family home up to the lot line if you would.
So, well, it looks to me like, when I looked at the map, we've got a lot, a lot of mixed use land. Whi- whi- which, I know that there are some people that, that love that. I know a couple of folks in my neighborhood think we, we don't wanna change it. Until I mentioned a couple of different possibilities for going up on my little his friend, oh, no, no, we wouldn't, yeah, we'd have something against that. Except that they couldn't, because in accordance with mixed use um zoning, you could. So what I'm, what I'm trying to get at is how would we, but would we essentially have to go through all the mixed use zoning districts and and rezone them in order to prevent something like that from happening again? So if there's not such a huge cluster, such huge homes.
So.
And we, we can't do it. I mean, we can't rezone things.
But we can recommend, we can recommend.
But this might be an example of where we could alter density based on the zoning district, you know, if, 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 for example, if a lot of your mixed use is rural and we think that, you know, one single family home per thirty thousand square feet is too much for the rural areas of the county. And that particular district, we could make the expectation more. We could say, okay, you've got to have a full acre for a house, or you know, that, that's just hypothetical. Whereas closer to town, I, I mean, that's what I'm assuming could be done potentially with zoning, although that's a really huge swath of Mills River to try and do that too, but.
But again, we don't, anymore doesn't have that authority. We have the authority to recommend, but we don't have the authority to change or to review a project and say, no, there's, there's too many houses going on, and she can't do that. Well, yes, I can, because the zoning says that I can do this.
To get to your original question, so the, the three approaches, if you did not wanna see that type of development would be to have setback requirements, so the buildings have to be set back from you know, front, side and rear a certain distance. The standard ones we have in town is sixty feet from the front property line, thirty feet from the sides and thirty feet from the rear. Just by having that, you eat up a developable lot area that will in turn reduce the size of the home. Um, and then the second part is, is minimum lot sizes. I mean, by decreasing the lot size, you decrease the amount of buildable area and the size of the home. If that's what you're focused on is seeing these.
Mega mansion.
Yeah, like mansions, uh, you know, being built in this development.
Plunged together, so, you know, I don't mind McMansions, but this is, anyway.
The.
So would that have to be done? Certainly we can't approve it, but we could recommend that going forward, certain projects needed to make, even though it was in a MU zone, certain projects could still need uh, what, we could put a restriction, um. I heard you mention that, that we could say, no, you've gotta have so many or so, and, and I'm thinking that's, that's more like contract zoning from that.
Yeah, we can't single out, I mean, we can single out development types in our regulations, but we can't single out developments or property unless it's part of a zoning regulation change. So one thing this board can do is initiate the text amendment process, which is the process in which we actually change the regulations. Again, it, council has final say, but, but that's a process this board can initiate and, and has done.
So, so for example, you could, you know, we could, we could ask for a, start the process of a text amendment that required certain setbacks in the mixed use.
But that would be, that would be all inclusive if we did that, right? Uh, so that if we did that, we codified that, then any use in that, anywhere in that mixed use district would be limited to that.
N- not necessarily. I think there's, there's places in there where you could, could make the language work to where it was only for
But it's not.
Single family.
It's not working that way right now in, in MU zoning, right?
I don't understand your question.
It could be made to.
Well, I'm saying if, if, if we develop a text amendment, the way we worded it could specify.
Right, but that's.
What we wanted to, it is currently not, there is currently no setback language for mixed use, correct?
Thank you.
The, the last thing I was gonna bring up that does limit built upon area across an entire development is our watershed regulations. So because we have drinking water intakes, one in the town limits, one just outside. Um, all the water within a certain radius that flows to those drinking water intakes limits the development intensity. Um, built upon areas, the word, basically new impervious surfaces that create new stormwater runoff. Um, we're in the process of adopting our own watershed ordinance now. But again, every district has different standards. If you're just upstream from the Hendersonville Water Intake, you can only build on twelve percent of, and again, I might be misquoting, you can, you can only build on a very small percentage of your property, because the state you know, uh, per public safety, health regulations, doesn't want new runoff going right, you know, near a drinking water intake that's a public water supply. Now, in areas like where the Mills River Crossing developments are, they're in the loosest district, because they're fur- they're further away from the drinking water intakes. And uh, forgive me if I'm quoting wrong, but I believe it's twenty-four percent of the property you can build without stormwater controls, no pond, no underground chambers or up to fifty percent. I may be wrong on that, though. Did anyone briefly wanna look at some ordinances? I'll scroll through them real quick.
Sure.
Okay. Grumbles. Uh, oh, that's right. So, uh, this is Hendersonville zoning. Um, it's going to start from the least dense or the most rural to the most dense. And again, I'm just gonna highlight the, the density in part of their zoning district. So the first is the R forty estate residential, again, designed to accommodate single family dwellings, extremely low density. And if you look at the dimensional requirements, and I'm not saying these numbers are right, I'm just saying as an example, they have a minimum lot area, lot area per dwelling unit, so density for every zoning district and different um, dimensional requirements, building setbacks, et cetera. Now going to their next district, I'll skip over this, the R twenty low density residential. Scrolling down to the density requirements, their minimum lot size is twenty thousand square feet, and then this is what I wanted to highlight. Lot area per dwelling unit, twenty thousand for the first dwelling unit. And then half for the second, for a two family dwelling or a duplex. So that's a situation where you're still requiring more land for duplex, but not two single family lots. Um, and then it goes on, and again, Hendersonville is not Mills River and is, and is a unique example, but again, this just shows density by zoning district. So R fifteen is their medium density. Here you can see the lot size is five thousand square feet smaller, the same formula for a duplex. And then even going further to R ten. And, you know, ten stands for ten thousand square foot lots, so on and so forth. So that's how they do it. Um, if we switch over to the county, and again, forgive me, this is just how it is online, going in the opposite direction from most dense to least. R one is their most dense district, and then they have different allowances, so uh, standard density for this district is four units an acre, intermediate is six, maximum is twelve. That could be a formula if we're asking, or allowing a density bonus structure for workforce or affordable housing. This could be where you have different levels per zoning district to allow that. Um, R two, um, and then, and again, it's, it's actually only this dense district, the R one that has these really high densities, which I haven't looked at the zoning map, but I would guess is the down, you know, downtown areas. Um, although that's not right, cause they don't zone downtown Hendersonville. Um, but the R two district, you can see they have uh, one and two units per acre allowed. Again, with the assumption that the county is zoning more rural areas, because again, cities with With the assumption that the county is zoning more rural areas, because again, cities with downtowns have their own zoning. But that's all I wanted to show you is just two examples. Of how it's included by zoning district.
All right, is this something you could transmit to us? Myself, I could just print it out if you could. And. Something just, where I sit down and. Take some time to study it.
My intent was to have a whole table for you. Analyzing every district and density, but unfortunately, my time is limited, so I wasn't able to get that ready in time for the meeting. But I can work on that for the next meeting, because this sounds like.
That'd be good, like, we're in a very preliminary discussion on this subject tonight anyway, so. But, you know. Again. We'll go back to this minor clustering of homes, but I think the key is. Side yard requirements and that kind of stuff, because that's the big problem in Mills River is multi-use. I was here when Mills River Crossing was approved, and they met all the requirements. We couldn't say no. So that's the way it is.
So this first sentence on the background, my own, is. Maximum allowable density of four units down to two and a half to three units. We're talking a blanket. Mills River. With some exceptions. That could, that I don't think currently exists. I mean, it sounds like this is a full. For everywhere.
So. Those numbers are what council members threw out as an example of what they would. Possibly lower our maximum density to, for these, only for the special development types. So again, it's only. What I list, multifamily, tiny home parks, RV parks, mobile home parks that can. Use the four units per acre max density. Council threw out lowering that to two and a half to three units an acre. And that was one of the items they wanted feedback on from this board.
I call the townhomes, we. Asked a question about that when we were working on that a while back. The property, you know, they clustered in the one area to build this home. The property that they're not using, is that? Going to stay with that? From now on, it can't ever be be built on, can it? More added to it.
Correct. One, most of it's in the flood plain, so it's not prime developable land. But when they, so now that they've gotten their special use permit approval, they're back working with their engineer to, you know, engineer everything down to a T. Which is gonna take some time, but when they come back to me. To actually do the subdivision, because they are gonna have those small lots for every townhome unit. That is something I will place on it, that the. Forty-four, forty-five percent of the land that is open space will be marked on the plat as. Open space recreation area, not developable.
Right, this one had like thirty-five acres, so it's pretty large. Which isn't so bad, you know. Since that, that nobody can build on that other acreage around it. But. In some cases, like if they had five acres. How many homes could they put on that, or something like that, the way it is now?
If they were to submit for a five acre parcel?
And more to build townhomes.
Twenty units, just. Five acres times four units an acre. And then, as an example, I was gonna actually throw these other numbers in there, so. Let's, let's go back to the Jeffers parcel, because that's what we're familiar with. So they had thirty-five acres, excuse me. Actually, I think it was more. I'll just use thirty-five for the sake of easy math, so thirty-five acres times four units an acre is one for, a hundred and forty units. So if we went down to three units an acre. Thirty-five times three units an acre is a hundred and five units. So even a quarter or a half of a dwelling unit per acre. I mean, right here, we've got a thirty-five unit reduction from going down one unit an acre.
Staying on the Jeffers property for just a second, they've got, I don't know how many acres that are quote unusable because they are in a quote floodplain. Doesn't necessarily mean they can't haul in a ton of dirt. And fix that floodplain issue and put another. Bunch of homes on there, is that right?
And that's actually partly what the Par D outpatient surgery center development is doing. It's not floodplain, but they're raising the level of the ground around that outpatient surgery center. To be level with where the surgery center is being built. For potential future development. But you need special approval from the state Department of Environmental Quality from that erosion control. There's special permits for fill on a floodplain. Now, now the town doesn't review that. But again, usually we're queued in when that type of fill is placed there. Now, again, with the Jeffers townhome development, in theory, they could. Truck all that fill in and make it. Not floodplain and developable. But that's why in the subdivision plat, I'll basically have a note and have notations on it. That is not, it is not to be developed. It is to remain open space, because if they were to sell that off or develop it. They would basically be out of compliance with both the special use permit approval and our zoning code.
And and even if they didn't sell it off, if they tried to build more than. With with what they're already building, they. If they go, they would exceed the density. Because they, they are at their max density with what they're currently. Right.
Now. Playing it out, if they were to buy neighboring parcels. They could add more units or, you know, extend the development. But only with that land, they can't count, you know, the dwelling units per acre math, any of the land they've already developed. So if they bought five acres next door, and we still have the four units an acre requirement, they could only add twenty more units, but. Again, they'd have to acquire new land to expand that development.
Well. That about clear as mud, folks. And 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 obviously, this is, this is, is complicated, you know, and there's not a. I don't know that there is a, a one size fits all always, and there's certainly not going to be. A solution that's gonna make everybody happy, and I know that's shocking to most of you. After being here for a while, but. The the best we can do is work on it and try and find something that that will. That we feel like in talking to people. And then in talking with town council, that might work for. Mills River. I know. The one thing that everyone comes back to is preserving the rural agricultural nature of Mills River. And so I think that should be our top goal in looking at how we can best. Do that while still providing for our citizens and still giving them places to live, affordable places to live. And maintaining the character that's here, and I I don't have. The answer for that, but that's why we're having this conversation. So is there any, any strong feeling of things that that? We could send a council that we're considering right now? Obviously, we we've asked to look at some things further. Is there anything anyone wants to reiterate or add to that?
And I'll just tack on, I do want to deliver counsel a brief report at the next meeting, so I mean, even if it's just a general gut feeling. That you think it should, the four units an acre should be lowered even, you don't even have to have a number. Or if you can give me direction to report back to them that we want to look into the zoning district density method further. Just some, something basic for me to report back.
I I do think that that is worth considering for, particularly for multifamily. Just, just seeing just that drop, dropping, you know, one acre in in requirement, you know, lowering that many units. I do think that's something to consider. We're not doing away with multifamily. But that might. Allow for lessening the density somewhat, might be a good compromising point. And personally for me, and I don't know about the rest of you, but I would like to see, looking at the. Density based on zoning district and some examples of that. You have some concurrence there. This is, it's a starting point. Anyone else like to add anything?
I just want to know from Mike if that's sufficient for you to take back to the council.
Sufficient for me.
And I I did think up another question. I think I saw some discussion about town council had considered a moratorium on development. Whether they do that or not, there are, you know, pieces of land in play. That will. Be under the current. Ordinances unless they are changed, so I think that ought to be part of their decision is. You know, if 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 the citizens are unhappy with what's going on now, it's gonna continue until something is done. And. You know, that's either by moratorium or changing the ordinances or a combination of the two.
I do think they were considering a moratorium, but they took that off the table because. A moratorium would not apply to multifamily. Am I correct, or townhomes specifically?
The state of North Carolina. It's not legal in the state of North Carolina to have a moratorium on any type of residential development.
So they realized it would. It was a moot point, so that's off the table, yep.
But but you are correct, you know. My job is to enforce the the code as it's written on the books and to treat everyone fairly and equally under that code. And until it's changed, that's what's allowed.
Alrighty. Well, that will conclude our new business. Are there any additional items tonight? Any updates you can share with us? From town council other than this direction?
Nothing at this moment besides the rezoning dates I reported earlier.
All right, so that is the. Additional items, so we are to the point in the evening. For the magic motion.
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Mr. Foster makes a motion, we adjourn. Is there a second? We have a second by Mr. Abbott, all in favor, aye? Any opposed? And we are unanimously adjourned. Thank you so much.